Are we good?
Yep, we're live.
Okay, we're live. All right, so I call this a special meeting of the Attacadero City Council to order, and we will begin with our roll call, please.
Certainly. Councilmember Fonzie.
Here.
Councilmember Funk.
Here.
Councilmember Newsom.
Here.
Mayor Protem Borbo.
Here.
Mayor Moreno is absent today for present one absent.
Okay, thank you. And if you are watching or listening to the city council meeting this morning, welcome. And if you would like to speak during the time set aside for public comment, please call 805-538-2888. So you can provide public comment. Okay, the purpose of this meeting is to conduct interviews for appointment to the San Luis Obispo County Tourism Marketing District. And the city has one appointment to that body. So we're going to talk briefly about the interview process before we begin the interviews. So we have a, well, to keep things simple, we're going to have each council member ask the same question and ask them in the same order. Now, have we received the email with Councilmember Funk's additional question?
I did send it. Hopefully, it's been received.
Let's check. I don't know. Have the others received that? Okay, here it is. Um. Okay. I think, Councilmember Funk, I think that can be incorporated into the first question. Which is also about, you know, what is it about on the on serving on the board that interests you?
Yes, I think that if I could adapt that first question in that fashion, I would be I would be happy to do so.
Okay, well, I tell you what. I'm going to change things up, and I'm going to have you ask question number one.
Okay.
Councilmember Fonzie will ask question number two. Um. I will ask three, so that Heather can stick with four. Um, and um. We will ask who's left here. Let's go back. Susan, you asked five. Roberta, you asked six, and I will ask the mayor's question.
Okay.
That work? Heather, I know you only get one, but so, okay, we will do that. Um, and then as I mentioned, the mayor is not here today, but she did have an additional question that we will be asking on her behalf. I will now open this meeting to public comment for anybody who would like to make a public comment before we begin the interviews. Luke, do we have anybody who would like to make public comment?
We don't have anybody on the line yet. We have a few folks hanging out in the room, but nobody for public comment yet.
Okay, and I want to point out to everybody that after we interview everybody, interviewed the three applicants, we will be allowing another opportunity for public comment at that time. And have we received any emails or comments in by paper or any other method that need to be read into the record?
Thank you. We have not.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, so we are ready to begin the interviews, and I assume they are in the waiting room and listening as well. Normally, when we do interviews for commission type appointments, like planning commission, et cetera, we ask that the first applicant come in. We would be doing this in a physical room, obviously. We ask the first applicant to come in. The other applicants are, can be in the room, but we ask them not to be so that they don't have an unfair advantage of hearing the questions ahead of time. So what I would like to ask of our second and third applicants today would be to kind of mute your speaker on your computer or whatever device you're on. And our interviews are scheduled for 20 minutes, and then you come back in about we'll just watch your screen in about 17, 18 minutes, and if we're ready for you, we will put a sign up is asking for you to join us. And so with that, I believe we are ready to begin our interviews with Mr. Scott Loy. Is Mr. Loy in the waiting room? Luke?
So, Mr. So he's our first. Let me move him.
Okay, Mr. So he is first, that's fine.
Who's first?
I had it down as Mr. Scott Loy is first.
I don't have him in the room yet.
Okay, is Mr. Oric in the room?
No, I think there.
If Mr. So he is.
Email you, Amanda, the first.
I did send an email to Scott to let him know we were ready for him. So hopefully, if he's not on yet, that he will be momentarily.
All right.
Okay, well, we'll give it a minute. And did you indicate that Mr. So he is in the waiting room?
He is.
Okay, well, we'll give Mr. Loy a minute to join us, and if not, we'll proceed with Mr. So he and Luke, you can speak with Mr. Loy and Mr. Oric as they join in the waiting room?
I'll be able to chat with them. What I'll do is I will essentially dismiss them from the webinar, and then they'll hop back on when their time slot is up.
And
wait.
My apologies. I did get a response from Mr. Loy, and he is in the process of connecting, so he should be with us momentarily.
Okay. Okay. We'll give that a minute.
I'm gonna grab my coffee.
Always a challenge with the Zoom meetings or webinars.
I know. It's so dysfunctional in the fact that, you know, you don't just go and focus on one thing. There's like five other things around you at once.
Yeah, well, it's amazing how much we get out of body language and, you know, physical presence.
Well, our ground crew just showed up, so if it gets really loud, I'm not be able to ask that question.
I found the the loud button on my computer, because, you know, sometimes speakers are softer or whatever. So I turn them way up, but then I have to remember to turn, you know, turn it back down when somebody else is on.
Okay. Two computers, and so there's, you know, the laptop mouse, the computer mouse.
Yes, just join.
Okay, Mr. Lloyd, can you hear us? Hey, can you make him live, Luke?
Yeah, he's in the meeting now.
Okay.
Adjusting his.
Microphone, yeah, or speaker.
Yeah, correct.
Mr. Lloyd, if you can hear us, please try to make your speaker or turn your speaker on so we can hear you. Mr. Lloyd, are you there? Mr. Lloyd, can you hear us?
Yeah, his microphone is still not connected. Mr. Lloyd, there should have been an audio pin, depending on how you connect it. Looks like you used audio on your phone. The audio pin will connect you. You can choose to use your computer audio as well. There we go. His audio should be live now.
Hello.
Okay. Oh, hello, Mr. Lloyd, you can hear us then.
Yes, sorry about that.
All right, well, thank you. I know we always have some connectivity problems either with ourselves or with speakers. So anyway, thank you for joining us this morning. We're ready to begin interviewing you regarding your application for the San Luis Obispo County Tourism Marketing District. And our city's seat or representative on that body. So anyway, I'm going to turn it over initially to Councilmember Funk. We're going to go through questions one at a time for you. We have 20, 20 minutes set aside. We're going to have a total of seven questions, so you know, that's, so you need to keep it brief, but reasonably thorough. Please, we'll go ahead. I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Funk for the first question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. There are opportunities to advocate for tourism at both the county and city levels. What interests you in the service and in the service specifically on the county board?
Good question. I moved up in San Luis Obispo County in 1987, lived down in the south San Luis Obispo for five years. Moved up to Atascadero in 92. Um, we moved away for five years and tried our luck up in the Oregon area, but we moved back just about a year and a half ago. We like this area. That's why we moved back. Our children live here. Our grandchildren are thriving here. As I returned after 20 years in advertising photography or more, I've noticed a change. So we started in Airbnb when we purchased our new house. In six months, our Airbnb was so popular that we became super hosts. We had 42 guests within the first six months. We have recently just had seven guests in the last two weeks since the results of the COVID is loosening up a little bit in this county. So I'm well aware now, coming back objectively after five years of hiatus, I see the importance of the marketing. We see how much people really enjoy coming to share our county, the tourism. So I thought this would be a good point for me to apply my skills, my experience in the last 40 years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fonzie.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd, for being here. What quality experience and expertise would you bring to the board?
I've been a professional photographer for over 45 years. As I stated, I've lived in this county for almost 28 years. Um, I had a thriving advertising photography business down in San Luis Obispo. Had some very good clients, and things change. Around 2000, I realized that things were going digital. And I've tried to adjust and change as much as I can. My five years spent up in Oregon, I was a specialist that averaged 100, no, excuse me, 1.5 million dollars a year sales as a specialist for an Apple Store. So I'm aware of the change in technology, and I'm trying to adjust along with it. I've learned an awful lot in the advertising corporate area. I've learned even more so now as an Airbnb host, super host. And I see a need to keep this county on the map. We have a lot to offer. We have a lot to see in development, identification, so that people come from all over. We've had people in our Airbnb from Europe, from Asia. And that's only six months of experience. So we're kind of excited about the people that we meet here, and evidently, the word is getting out. So I'm excited about that, and we want to stay and retire here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next question is mine. Mr. Lloyd, how do you see your role as a member, if you were selected, of the Slow County Tourism Management District?
Okay. I would be very proactive. I've already done some looking around on some of my favorite go-to resources. One of them is Flipboard. It's a news app that you can get on your phones or you can get on your, your computer systems. And I've noticed that Atascadero doesn't have its own magazine. And I think, well, we should. Paso Robles has one. San Luis Obispo has one. That's something that I could offer and focus and give the energy that I like. I am a passionate person in my photography. I've become a passionate Airbnb super host. So when I get involved, I give it 110%.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Newsom.
Welcome.
Hi.
What do you, hi, what do you believe are the most important issues facing the TMD?
Good question. I'm looking at your 2020 strategy. And it's very impressive. I would like to see that continue. As I've said in my photography, I'm very image oriented. I'm contemplating even purchasing a drone to start getting some more quality aerial photographies for my stock photography. We have so much to offer in this county. It would be imperative that we stay on top of it using the newest technologies. Whether it's video blogs, blogging, YouTube, et cetera, the newest technologies are something that we ought to stay on top of. Looking at your strategy direction, that's not my strength. My strength is a visual person. My visual, my strength is a passion, something that I learned. But I'm very impressed by what I see on the strategic directions, and I would hold to that as much as I could with the passion that I can bring to the table.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Funk, your second question?
Yes, if appointed, what specific goals would you like to see the TMD achieve?
Well, the one that jumped out at me, I already mentioned it on the flipboard. I would think Atascadero needs to have or be encouraged, whatever people that need to be contacted to develop its own magazine that can be out on an international connection. I know people all over the world use Flipboard. Apple has created their own magazine. So we're in a new technology with a variety of things that we can reach out and revitalize, keep revitalizing the tourism that we so desperately enjoy and have in this county. We live here for a reason. We love it. Our children thrive. Our grandchildren are thriving. But we also like our openness. We also like our space. Tourism is a great answer. Did I answer your question, Susan?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Fonzie, you have the next question?
Thank you. Is there any additional information you would like to share about yourself?
That's a good question. That's one I'm not prepared for. Let me think about it for just a second. My five-year trip to Portland, Oregon was a very good experience, so that upon returning, I feel I'm more objective. I'm seeing things that I didn't see. A lot has happened in five years. I see great things happening. I'm really impressed with what's happening with the downtown Atascadero with the new building growing on. I happen to have my main road. I live on Portola Road, and it just got a nice new black top, and I know most of that is happening right now. It's very enjoyable. We appreciate that. My wife and I are here to stay, so if I commit to a three-year appointment, I'll be here for three years, God willing.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have one, one final question that was submitted by our mayor, who was not able to be with us today. Have you been involved locally with the Atascadero Tourism Business Improvement District, our local T-Bid? And even if you have not served on the board or anything, can you tell us about any participation you've had in regards to the AT-Bid, such as attending meetings or providing input to the AT-Bid?
I'll give you a very succinct question. No, I have not. When I moved back here, I was so busy trying to reinvent myself. We were in a rental house for four months. We figured out how to transition our daughter's and son-in-law's older house and move in, and they moved out. I started creating an Airbnb business, and I got involved as an emeritus instructor, both with Questa College and the Atascadero Rec Center, Jennifer Fanning. So I've been very busy, and I have not really put much thought to it. But currently, to answer that question, I have been trying to touch bases with Airbnb up in Cupertino and offer what I can, my talents, my skills. I have 20 years of digital stock files that I would love to get out and be used. And if I get this digital drone system, I would be offering that out as well. So like I said, my point is I have not attended much. I've been very busy. I was a assistant soccer coach on my grandson's team. So I have not had the time, but if that is an imperative thing that is requisite, I would certainly get involved more so.
Okay, well, thank you. And that was our last question, so thank you for participating, and we will be, as you know, interviewing two other candidates, and at the end, we'll be doing our deliberating and making a decision. You're welcome to, to sit and listen through that process. If you do not, the city clerk will notify you of the results of process. Correct, Amanda? And that's how we normally do it.
Right. Well, thank you for all the, for the participations and such. I appreciate it very much, and it's, it's good to be back home. This is my home. So thank you again for the opportunity.
Right, and thank you for, for your interest in participation. We really, we appreciate that from all applicants. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So Luke, are you able to communicate with Mr. Oric? Mr. Oric, if you're watching, then now is your time. Go in the meeting, or turn up your speaker so you can hear us speak.
I want to see their videos.
As he connects, oh, Mr. Oric just connected. I'll let him get his.
We're actually, beautiful, because we're actually a minute ahead of our expected time. I don't know. Amanda, as the clerk, did you give each of the applicants a tentative time or an approximate time?
I believe early on, they were given tentative times, and then I followed up yesterday with an email, letting them know I would be emailing them as soon as we were ready for them to join the meeting and what you addressed early on about the honor system and not coming on to the meeting until it was their time. So I will do the same thing for our final candidate once we're finished with Mr. Oric's interview.
So Mr. Oric is now live in the meeting. He's connecting his audio. Okay, good morning.
Okay, good morning, Mr. Oric. This is Mayor Protem Borbo, and the city council welcomes you. We appreciate your interest in applying for this position. We will be asking you a series of questions, one by one. And unless you have any questions about that process, we will go ahead and begin the questioning.
Sounds straightforward to me.
Okay, so I'm going to turn over the first question to Councilmember Funk.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Borbo. Let me ask, there are opportunities to advocate for tourism at both the city and county levels. What interests you in the service and in the service specifically on the county board?
Interesting. So I, maybe I'm misunderstanding. I thought it was more focused on the city of Atascadero Tourism Board. So there's actually opens on both the boards?
There are two different boards. There is a city board and a county board.
Okay, my, my preference would be the city board. And I can, I can tell you why that is, if you like. You know, I probably entertained about close to about 540 various people and from really all around the world. It's kind of interesting how many people come to our area that are actually from outside the United States. And how many people have said, I can't believe how great Atascadero is. I've never heard of it. And they, but they know Paso Robles, and they've heard of San Luis Obispo, Pismo Beach. And when I, I take pride in my, my short-term rental, that I actually put itineraries together, and I helped them actually schedule various events with the local wineries. I try to set them down to downtown Atascadero. I really try to promote our, our town because I think it's a remarkable little town, and I grew up on the Central Coast my whole life, living in Los Osos. And I can tell you, I absolutely love Atascadero. And my family here, and, and I'm just amazed, and the people that come through are rental. They tell me that they can't wait to tell their friends and wherever they're at to come back to Atascadero. So you know, I'm a true believer that tourism is a extremely important to our local economy. And Atascadero, as you all know, we need to really drive that economy, create jobs here. So that's why I prefer to be focused on Atascadero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and let me ask this question as our city clerk representative, Amanda, you may know this. If not, I know our third applicant would know it, and that is, what is the status on our local, the Atascadero Tourism Business Improvement District in terms of, I don't think we have an opening right now, but I know we do have them occur periodically. Do you know what the, if what the status is in terms of terms coming up or any current vacancies?
I don't have it off the top of my head, but I can locate that in just a moment for you.
Okay, because Mr. Oric is, Councilmember Funk indicated there is a local board called the AT-BID, the Atascadero Tourism Business Improvement District, which is, consists of hoteliers or lodging industry folks inside our community and focuses on trying to increase tourism specifically to Atascadero. Whereas this position is our representative to the countywide Tourism Management District, which, of course, focuses on the county as a whole. But each community has a rep on that body, and so we, as the council, collect the Atascadero rep. And so that, that is the distinction. And the AT-Bid, the local is funded by the 2% portion of the transient occupancy tax, and the countywide one is, is funded by the 1%. It's on the TOT. So we have a city TOT of 10% that goes in the city, 2% additional goes to the AT-Bid, 1% goes to the DMD. But the reason I'm asking or saying all this and asking Amanda to look it up is because if your interest is truly more in the AT-Bid, you know, you might want to forego this, I guess.
Sure, sure. I guess the question would come down to where would I have the most impact? And I don't, frankly, I don't know enough about the county position. If, if being a representative of Atascadero at the county level, if I can have a lot of impact there, I would. And kind of put in perspective, although I live in Atascadero, I can't, my company is actually in Santa Maria. I have a large company down here that we run. So I drive through, you know, I drive home to Atascadero every day. I've lived in every city in San Luis Obispo County. And I'm highly involved in the chamber down here, and, you know, to put in perspective, we look at San Luis Obispo, actually, even in the chamber level, Econ Alliance level, we look at the entire Central Coast as an entity. We don't separate really the two counties, even though they are, and how we can better the two, the two counties, the two regions, I should say. So I mean, I'll kind of leave it up to you guys. If you think there's a better impact that could be done with the county, I'm open to it. I just, my mindset was significant at Atascadero.
We just want to give you every opportunity to present yourself, so we spent a few minutes on that. We can go ahead and ask the questions. We're not scheduled to interview Mr. So he until 10:45. So we can go ahead with questions that we have here and, and see. You can tell us what your interest level is. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and have Councilmember Fonzie ask you the second question. interest level is. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and have Councilmember Fonzie ask you the second question.
Thank you for being here. What qualities, experience and expertise would you bring to the board?
You know, I, you know, my expertise actually is solving problems. My company actually is solid companies. My prior, my previous other two companies that I've had in San Luis Obispo that I've since sold were solution companies. And so I've always prided myself on finding solutions, solving core problems to everything, whether it's budgets, whether it's deficits, whether it's marketing challenges. You know, I'm kind of a, I've always, every company I've had, I've always had to start, I've bootstrapped it basically from the ground up. So I'm familiar with almost every challenge that comes along with a company. And I think that I'd be well-suited interfacing if need be with hospitality. I did actually, in my prior life, worked for some of the large hotel chain in Florida. So I do have some experience there in regards to the hospitality side of hotel management. But I think primarily, I'm also pretty well-connected throughout the Central Coast. Whether it's small businesses and other, and especially in also the vineyard and wine releasing that. I think I could be probably an asset in helping solve some marketing issues, but also create, helping create some experiences that can convey to the people that might want to come to the area. And you know, like I said, I'm good at looking at numbers and can help work that through, although I may not have a degree in that background. I've got some business background, you know, done well for myself, so.
Thank you.
Will this Charles? I think that we did. It looks like he's offline at the moment. I was hoping he would reconnect here momentarily.
Unless I said something wrong.
Charles out now. I'm going to ask Charles question. We'll wait for Charles.
Thanks for taking your time today with us.
Yeah. Some challenges working remotely lately, huh? It's been an interesting couple of months for sure, right?
Yeah, it can be very backgrounds.
Do all of you guys live in Atascadero?
Yes, yes. In order to be on city council, we all have to live in the city.
Yeah, yeah, outside, just outside the city.
Charles has sent a text asking Roberta to take over. He lost his connection.
Okay, I guess you get me again then, Trevor. How do you see your role as a member of the Slow County Tourism Marketing District? That would be the county board.
Interesting question. Well, obviously, I see it as an important role, especially if I'm representing Atascadero at the county level. But I also recognize that my role isn't there to be combative, to try to work together as a team to try to basically allocate those funds properly so that it's a good spread amongst the various cities and regions in our county. So you know, I tend to be a little bit more of a team leader, but I'm also can be somebody who can learn and listen and take input and work together if we have a common goal.
Very good. Thank you. And I believe it's Heather Newsome next on the question.
Yes. What do you believe are the most important issues currently facing the TMD?
Boy, so many issues. Well, obviously, I think there's some real challenges here with trying to get, well, I say there's two sides to this. I think that we've got to reach out and let people know it's safe to come back to the Central Coast. And, and I also think that the other side of that is I think we're going to see a large influx of people coming to the Central Coast due to the whole COVID situation that we really need to focus on what that marketing message is. I think we also need to focus on how we safely how we create an image of safety by coming to the Central Coast. And now at some level too, and the county is doing a pretty good job of maintaining that safety. So I think that's probably the biggest challenge at the moment. I think other things outside of that in the long term is really going to be a marketing side of things. How do we reach outside, not only California, but I think other regions? And, but all of that's going to be based on really what the restrictions are on travel, I think, in the future. So I think it's going to have to be really understanding on a national level, a city and a state level as to what's going to be allowed for travel, what's going to be allowed to be open? And how we market that appropriately to the right demographic that we're not wasting money. So a lot of challenges.
Thank you. Let's go ahead with the next question, Susan.
Okay, thank you. So if appointed, what specific goals would you like to see the county tourism market district achieve?
Well, I'd have to look at the data first. I'll be honest with you. Since I haven't had access to the data, I'd have to look at past, look at some analytics and some past data to see what were the baselines that we can look at and create some goals and work towards achieving. You know, I think obviously pre-COVID, I think everybody was, I think, and I may be wrong, but I think tourism was up. I think the economy was doing well. That we have to be able to look at the data and determine what is a realistic goal moving forward. And obviously, if we can drive tourism here that also targets everybody, it'd be inclusive everybody, but also help bring people with tourism in that maybe there's an increased dollar spend per tourist to help increase some revenue, tax revenue for the county as a whole and the cities. And then we need to be looking at that and maybe a marketing message that can be put out there that, you know, you may not be able to jump on a plane anymore, but you can drive two to three hours and and come have a great time on the Central Coast and spend a little extra money. And, you know, at the same time, we know the Central Coast is an incredible place. So it's not, you know, it almost markets itself when it's once they get here. It's really how do we get them to spend a little extra dough in our local businesses and support, support locally?
Thank you.
Is there any additional information that you would like to share about yourself?
Let's see. You know, I can tell you that I moved to Atascadero in 2016. It's probably, it was one of the last places I haven't lived in on the Central Coast. And I can tell you guys, I love it. My kids are two junior in high school now and my son turning, getting to ninth grade. We also just had a, we have a seven-month-old baby as well. And so we really do call it home. We have no intentions to be moving anywhere anytime soon. We know that the Central Coast is home to us and by trying to help better the community and really the goal. I mean, we all need to, we all want to live here. And at the same time, I want there to be good, good-paying jobs in the long term for anybody that can stay here and help them stay here. So that's my main goal is to, in the long run, really help create opportunity and create good-paying positions that can keep my family here, keep my friends and family here. And we all get the luxury of still living here. So.
Very good. And we have a question from our mayor who is not able to be here today. She asks, have you been involved locally with the Atascadero T-Bid?
I have not.
And then I'll do a follow-up. Would you be willing to get involved with the T-Bid appointed or not to the county board?
Sure.
Okay, it sounds like you're very busy. You have a baby that's very young and we don't want to overdo things for you. We want you to fit in well.
Yeah, I appreciate it. My wife's luckily, she can stay at home and take care of the baby. So although I like to spend as much time as I can, of course, with her.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Orick. I think we're done with you. Amanda, you may want to give him the instructions on staying on the screen or going away. I'm not sure how we do this.
Certainly. I did want to answer the question, though. We will have two terms ending for AT bid in 2021. So June 30, 2021. Should you wish to look at that in the future, that would be the next time that that would be available. And, and then just as an FYI to council, we are working with Charles right now to try to get him reconnected.
Okay. And may I ask a question of our assistant city clerk here? For the Atascadero T-Bid, are those meetings are open to the public?
They are, absolutely.
So even in advance of Mr. Orick, in advance of the June 30th, 2021 opportunity, when current terms on the, on the board expire, there would be opportunity for him to, and anyone else of our other applicants to participate in the deliberations and discussions of that body and contribute.
Absolutely.
And Mr. Orick, I think we occasionally get vacancies and that would be something to consider as well. We can keep you on a list if you're not appointed to the county position.
Sounds like a plan. I think you guys obviously know where I could probably fit in best. So put me on the shortlist, maybe over the longlist.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Your interest. Thank you. We'll go ahead and let you go.
And, hey, Roberta?
Yes.
This is Charles. Hey, my connection died, so I'm on the phone. So I'm going to, I think it's best if you keep running the meeting, but I just want to let you guys know I'm here and can be part of the deliberations here.
Okay, I'm going to give you one of the, or two of these questions because I'm asking all the questions. I don't like that. So are we ready, Luke, to go ahead with Mr. Ammer?
He, Mr. Sohe just dropped. He was on the meeting a minute ago because we just have Ammer, right? It's our last one. Oh, here he is. Let me connect him.
He might be back.
Charles in the back.
All right.
Yes, I have no idea what happened there. I just disappeared. At first I thought you were frozen. And then I realized it was me. And it wouldn't let me rejoin.
Connect to the meeting. There he is.
Welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
And you, were you, you were on when we described the process earlier, correct?
Um, I was. I was on for that first couple of minutes and then when it said mute, I muted but got bumped off. So yeah, I heard the first couple of minutes.
Got it. All right. Well, you're ready for our questions. And so I think we can go ahead and proceed.
Okay.
And our first question will be from Councilmember Funk.
Thank you for being with us today. There are opportunities to advocate for tourism at both the city and county levels. What interests you in this service and in this service specifically on the county board?
Um, well, I mean, I'm interested in lodging, hospitality and tourism regardless. I kind of, I kind of eat, sleep and drink that. So being involved with the city, it's been fantastic on a, on a micro level. And I feel like if I'm on the county board, I represent Atascadero in a larger voice throughout the county. I mean, in the Visit Atascadero Board, it's, it's all of us lodging members within the same community. For the most part, we tend to agree. We have a lot of good correspondence back and forth and but for the most part, we're on the same page. We're all from this community, proud of this community. And in Slow County, you know, I think, I think Visit Slow Cal is doing a great job with county representation and you know, it's important to, in these meetings, in these sessions, you know, Pismo Beach to Paso Robles to San Luis, there's a lot of variance. So, you know, Atascadero, it's important. I've learned a lot on the Visit Atascadero Board. I've learned a lot working with the city. And I know it's important to have a strong voice to represent Atascadero at a county level or hospitality.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question is from Councilmember Fonzie.
Thank you. Thank you for being on board with us today, Ammer. What qualities, experience and expertise would you bring to the board specifically to advocate for Atascadero tourism? That we know you have a lot of experience in hospitality and so forth. But how would you advocate on that board for us?
Um, well, I think that I, I think it's, I believe in Atascadero and I think it shows from investing in Atascadero back in 2008. You know, when I, when I opened this hotel, a lot of people were like, are you crazy? Who in their right mind would open a hotel in Atascadero? And, you know, I was like, yours truly, right? I knew that, well, I believed that there was a huge potential in Atascadero. Our location, our accessibility, our community, and especially in light with the way that things, the direction that things are going as far as welcoming visitors, our open spaces. You know, I A, I believe in it all, but B, I think it shows that I believe in it because of the investment that I made and then again, the continued investment that I've stayed in Atascadero. To answer that, I hope I answered that question.
Well, not exactly. I know you're committed from seeing your resume and we know you, but obviously. And how would you work that enthusiasm into the board role on the county board?
Um, well, I mean, the enthusiasm is always there. I think I would work it in with, I mean, the, I guess, the level of participation and being involved with, you know, different organizations, Visit Atascadero, of course. But, you know, early on, you know, we had the Coraggio group would come out and we had strategic planning workshops for as far as like the long-term vision for Atascadero. I was involved with those early stages. And when Visit Slow Cal brought the Coraggio group in, there was a lot of similarities, of course, but having that experience with them in the path of the Atascadero and then on Visit Slow Cal. And of course, them having that experience with me and working with me and like, hey, I'm at Atascadero and having that relationship. I think it was, I have a good, strong voice at that table, but I'm able to champion Atascadero specifically just because of the, I think, the long-term vision and the participation that I've always been involved with Atascadero and its goals for lodging.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you partially addressed this, but how do you see your role as a member of the Slow County TMD if you were appointed?
Um, well, I mean, it would be, well, it would be a renewed, if I was appointed, it would be a renewed seat. So I've gained a lot of experience the last three years. Very, it's been a fantastic experience. And I think the relationships that I've built in Visit Slow Cal has shown in such that they've, they've asked or nominated me to be on the executive committee at Visit Slow Cal. So I think in, in that capacity, I mean, I've always been involved and wanted to champion Atascadero, really also in North County because we work a lot with Paso Robles as well. But championing, championing Atascadero and its lodging efforts, but to have an opportunity to, I think, be on the executive side of things and to work closer on actionable items and not, not solely just, you know, voting and having my voice heard. I think that could be a good opportunity.
Thank you. Our next question is from Councilmember Newsome.
Thank you for being here. What do you believe are the most important issues currently facing the TMD?
That's a good question. Um, I think it is, as always has been, I think it's a united voice. And I think it's gotten so much better over the years. But there's always, you know, there's always these moments, there's always these tides where, you know, it's understandable that people will think locally and people will think community. I mean, that's going to be my goal, being on that board. But one of the, one of the challenges, I think, again, you know, Pismo Beach being the biggest TOT collector in our county, Paso Robles being extremely significant in collections as well. Us relying on Paso Robles and their tasting rooms. I think the biggest challenge is, is to continue to have that unified voice and not think in I, but more so think in we. And I think right now, Visit Slow Cal is doing a fantastic job. But, you know, there's always that concern, there's always that worry. And I think I'm a good voice in being involved to say, hey, let's not think about our individual community. We have to think countywide and to keep that, I guess, unison or that team play intact. I think that's the biggest challenge internally. You know, the other big challenge, of course, is just bringing in visitors, just, you know, the marketing efforts and creating demand and, you know, understanding how and who and where and when to send that demand. Because again, we have strong voices throughout this county who are, you know, what about me? What about us? And so I think I'm a good voice to be in there to say, hey, collectively, like, hey, I was born, well, I wasn't born and raised in Slow. I grew up in Slow. My wife was born and raised in Slow. But I've always been involved in hospitality and retail and San Luis proper. So to have partners in San Luis, to have partners in the coast, I think I'm able to bridge a lot of gaps, if and when there's ever going to be that fracture. Fortunately, right now, there's not.
Thank you. Our next question is from Councilmember Funk.
Yes, thank you. And thank you again for being here. If appointed, what specific goals would you like to see the TMD achieve?
Well, our mission goal is to create demand awareness and a brand to create ambassadors, to continue to come to this area to visit, potentially live, set up work and create community. So that's always been our mission. That's always been the mission of Visit Slow Cal. And I've always been supportive of that concept. Can you repeat that question? I'm sorry, I may have thrown myself on a tangent. My apologies.
Well, that's okay. I just, the question is, if appointed, what specific goals would you like to see the TMD achieve?
So, I mean, I guess to continue with our mission and to continue to bring, I mean, our goal is to bring visitors and to create TOT dollars and to create awareness for this area. I think, you know, the growth of visitors coming to this area, a big, big discussion recently that I've been very grateful about is to consider community, right? We've just gone through this major, the last three months have been a whirlwind for us all. And in the beginning, you know, our goal, our mission is to bring visitors. But in the beginning, we had to be cautious about that and say, hey, we have a responsibility to our community as well, not just to our bottom line. So is now not the time to tell visitors to come visit our area? Is now the time to say, to have a strong voice to our community to say, hey, we are here within our community. Now is not the time to visit. When the time is right, we will reach out. So that has been, I was really happy to see that type of a stance with Visit Slow Cal because, again, when your goal, it goes against our nature to say, don't come to this area. It was a lot of discussion and, you know, there was a lot of back and forth. And I was proud of the stance that Visit Slow Cal took. It was hard. And Visita Tascadero, for that matter, as well, we took the same stance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question is from Councilmember Fonzie.
Is there any additional information that you would like to share about yourself?
Well, sure. I mean, I'm, I think, you know, I mean, I'm passionate, enthusiastic, excited about hospitality. I love, you know, making partnerships and building relationships such as the nature of hospitality. You know, I enjoy representing a Tascadero. And I think I'd be, I think I'd be the right person for the job in the sense of, you know, I have a pretty good track record on Visita Tascadero to not think about my hotel, but to think about lodging as far as Airbnbs, luxury hotels, independents, brands, economy motels, RVs. So I think I've been really, really successful at separating myself from the equation and thinking for the greater good. And I think, again, that that would be what would help me at the Visita Tasc-, I'm sorry, the Visit Slow Cal board seat is that, number one, I wouldn't only be thinking about branded hotels, Holland Express. I wouldn't only be thinking about Airbnbs or short-term rentals. I'd be thinking about lodging as a whole. And my track record on Visita Tascadero has shown that. I've taken a vote that has directly, I've taken many votes that have directly affected me at the hotel personally, not negatively, but not as strong as for the community, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you. We did have an additional question that was submitted by Mayor Moreno, who was not able to be with us today. And this should be an easy one for you. Have you been involved locally with the Tascadero Tourism Business Improvement District? If you have not served on the board, can you tell us about any participation you've had in regards to the AT bid, such as attending meetings or providing input on topics relevant to the AT bid?
Sure, sure. Yeah, so I've been on the board since implementation. You know, the Tascadero, Visita Tascadero Board was really spearheaded by a former hotel owner, JP Patel, who was really trying to get that board going, from my understanding, for quite some time. So when I opened up in '08, it was around 2009 that he approached me. And it was a no-brainer to me. So he had my full support. And in the ability for him to finally be able to build some alliances with the hospitality lodging group of a Tascadero, we were able to get Visita Tascadero started and collect assessments. And I've been on that board ever since. I've chaired that board. And that particular board has, I've been very happy and grateful to get their recommendation in their hopes that I get on the Visit Slow Cal board. But back to the original question, yeah, I've been on there since implementation and I've chaired it one time.
Thank you. That concludes our questions for you as an interviewer. So you're welcome to, you know, hang around in the room there and listen to our deliberations. And if not, if you need to get going, the city clerk will notify you of the results of our deliberation.
You got it. No, that'd be great. I thank everybody here for their time and having this opportunity. I actually got interviews like crazy right now going on because the county's opening up and people are coming back. So it's time to get on the other side of the desk and start interviewing. But thank you. I appreciate the opportunity and I appreciate everything this council and our community and our organizations are doing.
Well, thank you again for your interest in serving the community. That concludes our actual interviews. Unless council has any technical questions, we will proceed again to public comments. See if there's any public comment as a result of the interviews. Luke, do we have anybody in the waiting room waiting to comment?
Yeah, so far we only have one, Deanna Alexander, would like to comment.
Okay.
We bring her into the line now.
Please.
She is live.
Well, good morning, City Council, and thank you for your service. So I don't know if you, hold on one second. I've got to turn something else. I'm doubling up here. So I'm not sure if you're aware that I am the current Chair of the Tascadero Tourism Board. And I wanted to put in a strong recommendation that we send Ammer to, back to the executive board. Or, you know, hold on one second. This is, sorry about that. Anyway, I've known Ammer since about 2011. And we have worked together since the inception of the Tourism Board. He has always been a very, very strong advocate for a Tascadero. He's got a lot of business acumen that I have a lot of respect for. And I think that he would be our strongest advocate for a Tascadero at this point, based on his experience and his passion and his business acumen.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your public, for your comments.
You're welcome.
Luke, do we have anybody else online to make comment?
We don't have any other callers. I see a few more people in the webinar. If you'd like to make a comment audibly, go ahead and click the raise hand, a little button there, and I'll unmute you. But for now, we only have three, four other attendees. So no other public comment at this time that I know of.
Okay. I have put this particular piece of paper away. Could you also read out the phone number, just in case anybody wanted to call in?
Yeah, if we have anybody that would prefer to call in, the number is 805, what is it?
Okay. Actually, no, I just dialed it to get back into touch with you. Okay. At this certain time, I will ask each council member to send their vote to the city clerk. And Amanda, how are we sending that to you? By email, by text? How are we sending it?
Either way, we'd be fine. I have access to both right now. So whatever's most convenient for each of you.
Well, before we do that, I don't know if we have any, if council would like to discuss this, have any deliberation regarding the applicants? Go ahead, Councilmember Funk.
I would just like to thank all three applicants for stepping forward. I love that the outreach that the city manager did to all of the varied lodging owners and providers in the city has gotten us a variety of perspectives. And I would encourage those applicants that we don't select for this particular board to be active with our local Tascadero tourism, the AT, the ID. And perhaps Amanda could remind us how people learn about when those meetings occur so that anyone who's on the line who might be interested knows how to participate in those local meetings as well as in the county level. Because we have lovely energy here with a variety of perspectives that I'd like to see active in promoting our wonderful community.
Certainly. So just as you can sign up for notifications of when a council meeting is occurring, when an agenda's been posted, the same thing is true for any of our other boards, T-Bid included. So through the website, you can always access those agendas. And they are, there is a regular meeting every month. I think there are two exceptions. I believe they don't have a meeting in December any longer. I know they made a couple of changes and maybe took away one meeting in the summer. But I believe that calendar is also posted on the website. So if you're wanting to be notified on when those meetings are occurring, you can certainly sign up for email notifications to be in the loop.
Thank you.
I think it's a good thing that we've had applicants from Airbnb, that type of community, type of lodging establishment as well. It occurs to me in terms of, and it's, you know, it's really great to get applicants who want to be involved in supporting the community. I think, I wonder if it might be helpful that when we have folks come in and get a business license to say, I'm operating a lodging establishment, an Airbnb or what have you, a non-traditional lodging establishment, that as part of them doing that, they be informed of the existence of the AT bid and the meetings and encouraged to sign up for the email notifications regarding the meetings, et cetera. Because we, you know, who are involved in this kind of stuff, we take a lot of this for granted, I think, sometimes. And yet, a lot of the times, we have these little bodies like Design Review Commission or this or that, and people don't even know they exist. And so with that, I don't know if anybody has any other comments regarding the applications themselves and the interviews? Or would you like to proceed and submit a vote to the city clerk? Anybody?
I'm good with voting.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay. All right. Then I guess we will submit either a text or a email message to the city clerk. And Amanda, if you could let us know as you receive those, so, and obviously let us know when you've got all four votes.
Certainly. I've received one so far. I've received everyone's votes and it looks like the council has unanimously selected Ammer Sohi.
All right. For that, and thank again all of the candidates for their interest in serving on the Slow County TMD and for taking the time to apply and to interview with us this morning. We'd like to congratulate Mr. Sohi again on his selection and confident that he will do a good job representing a Tascadero on that body and fairly representing everybody, everybody's interest in our community and our lodging establishment. Okay, with that, I think we are done. I want to especially thank Councilmember Fonzie for taking over when I was disconnected. I'm not sure how long it took you guys to realize I was disconnected. But thank you very much for doing that, Roberta. I really appreciate it. And I apologize for whatever the heck happened on this end. And with that, I think we adjourn to our next regular city council meeting next Tuesday on June 20.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Bye, everyone.